Welcome to the meeting of your Westland City Council. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Doug Wishart.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Clerk, call please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Here.
Pro Tem Sapi.
Here.
President McDermott.
I'm here.
Coram is present.
Okay, and we will begin tonight's meeting. We have two special announcements and presentations this evening. The first one will be a legislative update from our state representative, Dylan Wigella.
Hi, good evening, council and mayor. First off, I just always gonna do this for a little while. Dylan Wigella, State Representative, District 26. So that's Garden City, Inkster, Southeast Westland, and Northeast Romulus. So southeast of basically Wayne Road and Cherry Hill I have in Westland. To contact my office, we'll lead with that, (517) 373-3818, or dylanwigella@house.mi.gov. We help people every day with constituent services. We've started to get really comfortable in that space, helping seniors across the city and so forth. First, I just want to say, you know, I attended Blues Brews and Barbecue, and I had a great time. I did wait for about an hour to get Chubbs barbecue, and it was great. So, you know, I live in Garden City, and Chubbs is also from Garden City, so really happy to see that he won first place. And just thanks to all the volunteers that made things possible, I had some time to talk with them and just thanked them. That was really great. And I brought my wife, which is a rare sighting. You know, I don't always bring her to events, but if you were there and got to talk to us, it's always a pleasure. I also want to thank the voters. Won the Democratic primary a couple weeks ago. We had resounding 74% of the vote in the district, so happy to be the nominee again and hopefully keep serving the district. Couple other things, we have coffee hours coming up. We have a coffee hour every month, the second Thursday of the month in Garden City at the Radcliffe Center, from 5:30 to 6:30. So that'll be on September 12th. We also have another coffee hour in September in Romulus, and that one is going to be on Saturday, the 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Romulus Library. Lastly, the legislature is essentially on a mini-break. This happens every two years during campaign season, and you'll see, no matter what party is in control, essentially legislature kind of shuts down to do in-district work, et cetera. So a couple things my office is working on during this period besides our normal constituent services is continuing to push our taking back our power legislation, which is legislation that would ban utilities and monopoly corporations from donating and secret and dark money pathways. We're working with a grassroots coalition from 10 different organizations on this. We almost have the second set of bills which would ban the monopoly corporations in general that receive state contracts from making these donations to 501(c)(4)'s and 527's. Really wonky, come to my coffee hour if you want to learn a little bit more about it. Secondly, getting some positive reaction to our deception tactics legislation in Lansing. This is legislation that would ban the use of deception tactics on minors from police and law enforcement. Essentially, you know, right now, the current state of things is it's legal for our officers to use deception tactics, like lying, in order to get confessions. And what we see across the country with this is a high rate of false confessions from minors. So we're just trying to kind of close that loophole, make sure that our officers are protected, but also make sure that our kids are protected. Lastly, two other bills we're working on. One is called reasonable seating law. The way I like to describe this one is, if you've ever been to Aldi, there's something unique about Aldi. If you look at the cashiers, and my mother was a cashier for a long time when I was a kid, they are allowed to sit down. And in most workplaces, especially at grocery stores, that is not the case. So what reasonable seating would do would require employers to provide reasonable seating for their employees if they can continue to do their job functions while being seated. This is something of passion to me. I am someone who lives, you know, with chronic illness myself. I got diagnosed with fibromyalgia several years ago. While I'm in better shape, I have since learned that people with fibromyalgia have a harder time standing in one spot. So if you can sit down and do your job and do your job with dignity, I think we should allow that in this state. Additionally, I'm working on a bill that would require the posting of unionization rights in common areas of workplaces, so that when workers attempt to unionize their job spaces, they're aware of their rights and what employers can and can't do. Tried to keep this as brief as I could. Please reach out if you have any questions, and just an honor to keep representing the great city of Westland. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Okay, our second special announcement and presentation is related to all the wonderful volunteers that we had at Blues Brews and Barbecue, and I will turn it over to the mayor.
Well, hey, good evening, everybody. We had a great Blues Brews and Barbecue event a couple weeks ago, received about 99% positive comments. Every once in a while, there's something that somebody might give you feedback for that they might not like, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank everybody involved in the event. First of all, our police department, our fire department, our Department of Public Services, all of our city staff, all the employees, but tonight in particular, I want to thank all of the volunteers and civic groups that were involved in making that event possible. And I was personally very pleased. I had a great time. I thought the bands were excellent. The food was excellent. The setup was perfect. I love the way we did that this year. But thank you to everybody who was involved in this event, the residents, the people from out of town that came. I had somebody, actually a friend, all the way from Germany. He was visiting, and he came to the event, and he loved it. But I wanted to thank the groups, and what I'm gonna do right now is we're gonna have representatives of these groups come on up, because what we are gonna do is we're gonna donate some of the proceeds to the event, and it was record proceeds this year, by the way, almost $70,000 in drink sales alone, which was amazing. But we're gonna donate some of those proceeds back to the community civic organizations that make the event possible, and I know some of those civic organizations are gonna donate some of that money back to doing great things for our community. So I'm gonna start here on the low end and work my way up to the high end, and I'll read off the amounts, and as I read this list, I'd like representatives from these groups to come on up here with me so that we can present donation back to you. So I'll start with the Westland Youth Athletic Association, who we're donating $100 back to. Anybody here from that group? I'll keep going. The Westland Lions Club, $100. And this is based on the amount of volunteers and the time spent on the event, by the way. That's how we get these numbers. Westland Historical Society, is Sharon here? Sharon, come on up. $200 to the Westland Historical Society. United Community International, $250. And we're gonna get these, if they're not here, we'll get these checks to the groups as soon as we can. Develop Dance Project, $300. The Westland Rotary Club. Anybody here from the Rotary Club? Come on up. They're getting $350. Friends of the Westland Library. $400. Gateway Family Worship Center, $400. Westland Youth Assistance, $400. Westland Community Police Partnership. Chief, if you want to come down, or any of the officers want to join us? St. John's Episcopal Church, $600. Knights of Columbus, $750. Norwaine Community Citizens Council, $800. Civitown Club of Westland, $1,000. You guys must have done a lot of work that day. The Westland Democratic Club, $2,000. Wow, you had a lot of volunteers. And our biggest check tonight, and I'll tell you what, I was there helping out with some of these folks, the Westland Area J.C.'s, $3,200. Thank you, J.C.'s. Okay, so everybody got their checks, the real checks, but I got the big check here, and this is all the amounts added up. It's $11,390 that we're gonna donate back to the community groups. Hey, thanks again for all of your hard work. Let's give them a round of applause, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, well, we got a lot of great community groups, and we're certainly all, as a council, you know, very proud and thankful for all the work that each of you do each and every year. Blues Brews and Barbecue is only possible because of the civic involvement and engagement that we get. We have a lot of, you know, city employees who work it each and every year to help set up, but without the countless hours and person power from all of our civic groups here in the city of Westland, Blues Brews and Barbecue would not be successful, not be getting bigger and better each year. So thank you, you know, again, for all the work that each and every one of you do, well before Blues Brews, with all the training and sessions you go to, and then at the event itself. We know it's a long day and many hours, so appreciate all your work and dedication to the community and the Blues Brews event. All right, we will now move on to comments and questions on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's agenda. Questions may be asked and responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from your city council. Is there anyone on my left wishing to speak on the business agenda? Anyone on my right, comments on the agenda? Anyone else in the audience, last chance, comments on the agenda? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the consent calendar with a motion. There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Wishart. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes? Yes, Councilwoman.
Yes, I would like to move to item G off the consent calendar.
There is a motion to move item G off the consent calendar to new business. Is there support? There is support for that item. Okay. Okay, there's a motion with support by Pro Tem Sapi to move item G off the consent calendar. Is there any dissent? Any dissent on that? Seeing and hearing none, motion carries. Now back to the original motion on the consent calendar. Are there any additional changes to the consent calendar? Yes, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Council President. So I wish to move on the consent calendar, item J, to new business.
Okay, there's a motion to move item J. Is there support? There is support by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there any dissent to moving item J off the consent calendar to new business? Any dissent? Seeing and hearing none, motion carries. Back to the original motion on the consent calendar. Are there any additional changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Seeing and hearing none, motion passes.
Is there any dissent?
Oh, excuse, any dissent? Any dissent? You got me?
Got it.
No dissent, now motion passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held August 5, 2024. Minutes of both study sessions held August 12, 2024. Approval of professional services agreement with Sidot Group Incorporated for Architectural Services required for the construction of Fire Station Number Two. Terms for this agreement shall be effective immediately and expire after construction has concluded in an amount not to exceed $440,000. Approval of agreement with Presidio Networking Infrastructure Services for Network Infrastructure Service. Agreement is on an as-needed basis and will be valid for a one-year period. Standard hourly rate ranges from $185 to $290. Approval of fiscal year 2025 contract with SMART to allocate Westland's municipal and community credits to Nankin Transit for the transportation service that it provides for senior citizens and disabled individuals within the community. Amounts are $79,952 in municipal credits and $152,810 in community credits, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Approval of annual Zix Protect Essentials email filtering software subscription through CDWG. It's effective immediately, will be valid for a one-year period in the amount of $5,900. Approval of enterprise management software subscription renewal with BSNA Software. It's a one-year term in the amount of $10,792. Approval of purchase of two SIU vehicles and one administrative vehicle for the police department in an amount not to exceed $160,000. Approval of purchase of three replacement one-ton dump trucks for the Department of Public Service in an amount not to exceed $332,427. Approval of purchase of one replacement sewer jet cleaner for the Department of Public Service in an amount not to exceed $297,259.67. Approval of purchase of one replacement skid steer loader for the Department of Public Service in an amount not to exceed $62,631.64. Approval of purchase of one replacement Baco loader for the Department of Public Service in an amount not to exceed $141,887.1. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of prepared land division resolution, 35259 Katy, north of Palmer, east of Wayne. This was planning department number 2268, and the land division was approved by council June 17, 2024. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing seen none, motion passes.
Moving to new business. Approval of proposed rezoning from CB3 General Commercial Business District to CB4 Vehicle Service District, 34733 Warren Road, south side of Warren, east of Wayne, planning department number 2266. Planning department recommends denial of the proposed rezoning.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, is there support? Supported by Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, city council. The subject property here is located on the south side of Warren Road, just east of Wayne, highlighted in yellow on your screen. The property is currently zone CB3, that's our general commercial business district. It comprises of a vacant restaurant building formerly occupied by Alexander the Great. The petitioner tonight is proposing to rezone the property to CB4, that's our vehicle service district, in order to redevelop the site with a clean express auto wash. It's an automated vehicle wash, very similar to the Tommy's Express on Ford and Newburgh, but smaller in size. Property to the north is zone CB3 as well, developed by a drive-through Little Caesar's and Chicken Shack restaurants. Property to the south, where this jog in the line is over here, that's the Soho Grand Banquet Hall, also zone CB3. Property to the east, again, Soho Grand Banquet Hall, zone CB3. And property to the west, again, zone CB3, that's the retail plaza that includes Westland Party Store and Slice of the 80's Pizza Shop. With the exception of Soho Grand Banquet Hall, there has been no major developments in the general area, neither real interest in the property outside of the person who originally purchased it and tried to seek a marijuana license to operate a retail dispensary at the site who did not advance in the license process. A couple years ago, when this restaurant became vacant, there were people poking around, not many, for a restaurant with no real interest and did not eventually proceed to purchase or occupy the building as a restaurant. The 2018 City of Westland Master Plan future land use designation for this site is shop and dine district. A summary of this classification, it intends on promoting commercial uses with a focus on retail services and entertainment uses specifically. The classification also desires the area to become a regional destination, and a primary objective is to create a walkable and vibrant mixed-use shopping area for this area and the surrounding mall area as well. The administration is recommending approval. This is a conditional rezoning offered by the petitioner. The two conditions are a $50,000 community benefits payment to the city, and the second condition is that this CB4 zoning designation, if approved, will revert back to CB3 if the developer does not construct this car wash himself, or if the site plan does not get approved by you at a future meeting. The administration's rationale behind the recommendation to approve is that this site is located on a major thoroughfare, Warren Road, near the major node of Warren and Wayne, so we believe that it can handle the traffic generated by this use. Additionally, we have the capability of further studying that traffic by requesting a traffic study during the site plan approval process, which comes after the rezoning case, if approved. Petition would also upgrade not only the site itself, but landscaping in the immediate area along Warren Road, decorative fencing like you see in the DDA, and other upgrades to landscaping. The petition also facilitates the master plan goal of promoting diverse economic opportunity, and even though does not promote a walkable environment, does comply with the shop and dine district in offering a service which is consistent with that future land use designation. The planning commission's rationale for recommending denial are traffic concerns, again, that could be addressed through a traffic study done by a professional traffic engineer. The planning commission also expressed concern with the use not aligning with the future land use designation. We had a study session prior to this meeting. The developer, the project engineer, and someone from Clear Car Wash can discuss the operations, and I can answer any questions you have. Thanks.
Okay. The petitioner would like to step forward before I turn it over to the council.
Good evening, council members. Thank you again. Eric Williams with Stonefield Engineering and Design. Address is 555 South Old Woodward, Birmingham. Thank you, Mo. Again, thank you for everybody's time earlier this afternoon. We are here tonight seeking your approval of the conditional rezoning, again, conditioned on a $50,000 community benefit offering, along with if this car wash were not to be approved, we would be reverted back to the CB3. So we're fully understanding of that. I know there was some discussion about traffic concerns. Again, we would be more than willing to complete that traffic impact study, have it reviewed by police department, cities engineer, along with Wayne County ultimately, so that is something we understand and would be willing to undertake if this were approved. So again, not to belabor the corridor itself, I do just want to clarify, there are two uses that are zone CB4 at the inner- uses that are zone CB four at the intersection itself, so not directly adjacent, but again, in very close proximity, we are on Wayne and Warren Roads, two very vehicularly oriented roadways, high vehicle volumes. But what we do like about this site is that it is on the periphery of the shop and dine district. I know we talk about this a lot. I think at the same time, though, we know cars are not going away. They are here to stay. They're not going anywhere, so we do need to provide these services. We feel that the location lends itself to people as they come and go from their shopping, dining, retail experiences. And we do think that the Soho Banquet House also provides more than adequate buffer from the surrounding residential uses. Again, we don't see any unforeseen impacts occurring to the neighbors. I know we talked about noise a little bit. Again, these are high-traffic roadways. The noise that we would anticipate is not more than what you would see along these roadways. Again, Mo touched on it in terms of how we fit the master plan. We believe we do fit within the shop and dine district, maybe slightly differently than how it was envisioned by the planners. But again, this is a service. It is a necessary service. Again, you would be getting a new thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot Clean Express car wash. This is going to be about a four-to-five-million-dollar investment. I know we talked about the condition of the existing building, built in the nineteen-sixties, has been maintained over the years, but it's kind of ran its course from the way we see it. I know Mr. Kasab, who is the developer, is here and spoke to the challenges in leasing, sales, et cetera. He has shopped it around, it just, nothing has come to fruition. And then, just to maybe highlight additional improvements, landscaping will be brought into compliance. We did offer up a decorative fence along the roadway just to enhance that visual. Today, the way we understand it is there's no stormwater management on site. If the building were to remain and be reused, this wouldn't be improved. However, if the car wash was to be redeveloped, this is something that would happen as part of that process through the county. In terms of exterior lighting, I know we haven't touched on much, but again, it would be designed to meet city codes, no impact to the neighboring properties, high-efficiency LEDs, full cutoff, no light trespass onto neighboring parcels is really the punchline there. With that, Mr. Dennis Miller is here on behalf of Clean Express, Mr. Kasab as the developer and applicant, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
And I see the maker does have a question, so I'll turn it over to Councilman Murakowski.
Hi, thank you. I have less of questions and more of just comments at this time. Thank you, Council President. It is a desirable site and I think a lot of us miss the old Alexander the Great. In fact, as a child, it was always a toss-up between, you know, celebratory dinners were either there or my hometown, we'd go to Golden Feather. So I miss it. I think it would be a fantastic restaurant site. And, you know, I appreciate the time you spent with us during our study session and I admire your vision of what you would like to bring. However, I'm just going to not be in support of this. It's against our master plan. You know, there's some other caveats and without having to get too deep into the woods here for folks, if we rezone this to a CB four and a car wash is built and it becomes unsuccessful because, to quote my ten-year-old, when we were driving on Plymouth Road, we are going to have the cleanest cars in Michigan because everywhere we go, there's a new car wash. So in the unfortunate future where that ceases to become a car wash, it'll be zone CB four. And that means it's going to have an automotive use until the end of time. So that means that that parcel right in the middle of all of that commercial property that should be restaurants and retail could potentially become, you know, Joe Bob's used car sales or any other number of things. So that doesn't sit well with me. I don't like that. And, you know, there was a high amount of public dissent. People don't want a car wash. And yes, there are some CB fours. The word adjacent was used. It's not abutted to the property. I think we're all familiar with the corner of Wayne and Warren. Those have been, I would call grandfathered properties. They've been there for quite some time, the cartoons and the gas station. So as we're moving forward with our city and we're really trying to cut down on all these additional automotive use sites, you know, we have to be consistent and we had just denied a car wash at the Ashley's site, which would be directly across from what I call the mom-and-pop car wash. So with all of that in mind, especially the public dissent, the planning department's denial, I just cannot be in support of this evening. Again, I admire your vision and your desire to develop it. You know, you made it quite clear that it was going to be a car wash or potentially a pawn shop. Neither one of them are necessarily desirable, but the pawn shop doesn't make a zoning change to an automotive use in the middle of our shop and dine district. So I will not be in support tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Does the supporter have any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. I echo all the sentiments my colleague said and she and I have talked a lot about this previously. So again, we have a master plan. Master plan is put together with the city, it's put together with the community, and it's put together with a firm that we usually hire to help guide us through these decisions, to help give us some pointers. What should you be doing? What should you be doing? What is your growth? What is your vision for this area? And we call it the shop and dine district because that's kind of what we want to do with it. It's the shop and dine district, okay? So putting a car wash, an automotive use inside the shop and dine district flies in the face of what the master plan has set. Everybody in this community has a vision for that area. We know it's going to take some time, but delaying that or hindering it by putting automotive uses in that area is only going to just stagnate it even further and complicate it even further. Second to that is kind of the issue with building a car wash. A car wash, as I said before, it's a very purpose-built structure. It can only do one thing. You're not going to turn it into a McDonald's easily. You're not going to turn it back into a restaurant easily. You're not going to turn it into just about anything with the tunnel going through, with the dryers and blowers and machinery all through the floor. So once it's a car wash, it's a car wash. Or it's going to be extremely expensive to wreck that building out, almost as bad as taking out a gas station. And if anybody's ever dealt with developers about removing a gas station from a property, they just kind of walk away from it and build another gas station. So I don't think that's in line with the vision of this community. This community wants a shop and dine district. This community wants to have a walkable downtown and they want a restaurant there. I'm willing to wait for something better to come along and I'm not going to jump on the first thing that comes up. I'm pro-development, but this one just doesn't work for me. It just doesn't work. So I think we just wait a little bit longer. I mean, even if it becomes an office use, that building can, and maybe we don't have the best thing in there, but at least that building has potential and has a future, okay? That building can be easily redeveloped for other office, other shop and dine purposes. But again, once you code it CB four, that is automotive use in the middle of the shop and dine district, it is a car wash, it is a car wash. And I just can't do it. And I just have the same opinion that I did earlier in the year when we declined the other car wash for the same exact reasons. So I will be a big no today and I will support the opinion of my planning commission as well. Thank you.
Real quick and I'll get the pro temp.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to talk a little bit about why we are recommending an approval on this. And I know it might seem interesting because the knee-jerk reaction would be, oh, another car wash. Why do we want that? But this is a unique situation and on a unique site. So first of all, this is a very, if you could see on the screen, it's a very narrow property. We've had numerous people approach, the property owners over the years, who've been unable to come up with a restaurant. The building itself, it's the former Alexander the Great and that's somewhere that my family and I enjoyed for many years and we love the ribs. Unfortunately, it closed about five years ago and we haven't seen anything viable come in there since then. But I want to explain a little bit of the information in the background on why I decided to support this. And I strongly support it for a few reasons. As the current zoning stands, there is preapproval for something like a pawn shop. And in fact, someone did apply to the planning department to put a pawn shop there. Now, this is adjacent to our shop and dine district. And I'll just go on record tonight and say, I do not want to see a pawn shop on that Warren and Wayne, Wayne and Warren corner there. I do not want to see it there. I will oppose it with every tool that I have. With the new interest that we're seeing in the Westland Mall property, which we are seeing new interest in it, it has nothing public that I can share at this time, but we are very excited about the future of this whole area. That includes where we're at right here, all the way to Wayne Road. We're seeing a lot of interest. We're seeing new stores come in. We're seeing, we're getting a lot of calls and I think some really big, exciting things are going to happen in the next couple of years. But a pawn shop on that major corner right in the middle of this area goes against, I think, the vibe, the feel, the family atmosphere that we want to create here in our city-centered district in Westland. Now, this particular company, they're working on two locations just to the north of us in Livonia. One is at Plymouth and Wayne Road. In a very narrow property, a former Burger King, right, if you go down Wayne Road and make a right on Plymouth Road, you see that site right there. They just demoed the old Burger King. A very narrow property, very similar to this property. Now, I'm sure Livonia probably looked at this and said, okay, this isn't the perfect thing we want to see here. And they have quite a few car washes in Livonia as well. And it's not the perfect thing I want to see at Wayne and Warren, I'll be honest with you. You know, I could think of a few other things I'd like to see go there. But with the amount of investment, a five-million-dollar investment from this company and conditional zoning approval, it'll come back to the city council and the administration for site plan approval, which means that we control the landscaping, the look of the property, the signage. We can make sure this fits into this area without creating problems. So I do have a strong feeling that this is the better option for the community. I've looked into the company quite a bit. I met with the CEO of the company recently. They are offering a community benefit award of fifty thousand dollars, which we'd like to ask the council to steer towards veteran services, but we are open to other options. They're also known to partner with civic groups and be a good neighbor in the community. So a little bit of the background on what I've dealt with this particular site, I want to ask the city council to consider approval tonight. Thank you.
Pro temp.
Thank you so much for the presentation earlier. I struggle with this because ideally, a pawn shop's not ideal and nor is a car wash in that site. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is Westland Community News, a source of news, did a poll and the votes were pawn shop and fancy car wash. And most people commented and said they don't like either option, you know, that they want a restaurant. They want a restaurant. So really looking at what people want is they want the restaurant. And I know that there's been a lot of conversation about can we get a restaurant in there? And it sounds like, no, we can't. So as a council, we have to look at the best decision, the best option, and really like what people are saying online is that they are not favored to either, to neither. So, you know, I respect that fact that, you know, individuals just looking and scrolling through at the comments are just saying like, we are not in support of either. Can we have more restaurants? Can we have more restaurants? So just asking the petitioner, I don't know if Mr. Kasab or, I don't know who wants to take this, but if potentially denied tonight, I think the model of the car wash in particular is great. I think the location from some of my colleagues has been not desirable. So I'm just curious, if denied tonight, would you consider Westland for another option or is it just, we are, you know, this is the only option? And I just want to get this on the record, too, if this could be addressed.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sampi. We explored a ton of different options in Westland. Ford Road is ideal. I think there's, you know, a lot of competition there with the new Tommy's. I think that was the number-two car wash in Michigan over the last year. Warren was, you know, Warren and Wayne were really the next ideal options. And along Warren, you know, they were aware, we're aware of the shop and dine district and specifically, they preferred like the Aubries location, which is more central to the shop and dine, and the mall site where a car wash was previously denied. And kind of chose this as like their last option to, you know, pay respect to the shop and dine district. We do think that we fit into it and we don't want to be the center of attention to it, but we also would like to serve the customers there. We did exhaust our options in Westland and really tried to pick a site that could both work for us and benefit the community. And while I understand that car wash is not the most ideal use, you know, maybe anywhere, there is like some things to get excited about with Clean Express because they're really environmentally conscious and they do care about the communities that they're in and which is why they're being accepted in a lot of local communities here in Michigan and they're growing so, you know, quickly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so my colleague and I were talking about just the surrounding area and looking at a map with twenty car washes being located in a very small radius of the area. You know, as you start to fan out into the south end and possibly the east side of Westland, there's not as many. So again, that's why I wanted to ask the question, are we married to the location? And if that was the case, you know, why? Because that is important that, you know, we are diversifying businesses all over. So thanks for addressing that on the record.
Anything else? Any other? Yes, Councilwoman Bowman.
Again, I want to thank you for coming to having the study session as well as this time. I think I'm going to, I do echo much of my colleague's comments about the fact that if we're, it's that part that we are elected here to balance what we are seeing is good for our city as well as what our, the residents are asking for. And there is obviously large amount of people, you know, a fair amount of people that I saw too, that said, no. And I'm going to go back to an event that was here on April eighth with one of the organizations that we hired to help us with our look and how we're going to be able to attracting more businesses. And on weaknesses, among other things, we are auto-oriented. That was a weakness for us to be able to attract new people because there was the idea that we have enough. And that was back on April eighth. And so that does weigh, because I came on there and there was a couple of other things on there, but that has to weigh on if the people are, the residents are coming and speaking out and saying, hey, halt on the auto places. So I do, and it is that dilemma of like, okay, if, you know, what are we going to get if we say no? You know, and it's at risk, but at the same time, it's important. I know for us that, you know, we live here. We want to, you know, we want to attract. And actually, I was very pleased to hear the mayor speak about what's happening with our, that there might be some change with the mall, because I even think that that will add some of the attraction. So I think that there may be an opportunity that we're not seeing yet if we were too aggressive. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Okay. Is there any additional comments? Yes. I'm going to get to Councilman Hornbuckle.
I just want to make my few comments here, but I did meet with the petitioner about two months ago and the vision that they had was really great. So thank you for sharing that with me. I did sit with the mayor and discuss with him as well, but I didn't talk to none of my colleagues because this was important for the city. And knocking doors in that area, a lot of the people in the community said, no. Businesses I talked to, there's a pawn shop two doors down from the area as well that I didn't know was there until the residents pointed that out. And then today, they did a survey showing that the residents do not want a car wash there. And then in the study session, residents voiced their opinion as well that they do not want a car wash. So since I'm here to represent the community and the people in the community, I will have to be a no for this car wash as well. Thank you for coming out and I appreciate it.
Any additional discussion from the council? I'm going to get you in one sec, Mayor. I do have a couple of points here. So I have some discussion on this. So I don't, Brandon and I, Mr. Kasab and I, met about a month or so ago, you know, and I kind of expressed my consternation with this project. One reason is we've done a number of automotive projects over the years, whether it's Tommy's, whether it's the oil change place at Benoy in Warren, whether it's the oil change place that's going in and shop and dine up there at the Lowe's parking lot. And it's like, jeez. When do you... And it's like, jeez, when does it ever end? Like, every time we turn around and we say, "No more automotive," more automotive keeps popping up. You know, and I had some concerns around, you know, and I asked these in the study session, regarding market saturation. Is car wash becoming the new Rite Aid and CVS, right? We had those on every single, I know it's an apples and oranges comparison, but we had them on, you know, every single street corner. Now, you're seeing due to market saturation, changes in the economic environment for drugstores. They're closing and communities are being left with, you know, eyesore drugstores. We've got a couple of them here in Westland. The thing on the other side of it though, for me, is the pawn shop. And, you know, here we are with our Shop &amp; Dine District. Welcome to Shop &amp; Dine, and the first thing you see is a pawn shop. Not that the first thing you see is a car wash is a, is a whole heck of a lot better. I don't think it, truth be told, really is. The other thing that I, I guess I have a little bit of heartburn with is, you know, originally, when, when Tommies had come before the city, it was denied. I think back in like 2017 or 2018, on the old Feister RV site up there at Ford and Newburg. And that's, that's as primal corner as you can get in, in Westland. Coming in down Ford Road from Canton Township, it's at a very busy intersection. And, I mean, Feister had closed in, what, 2007, 2008? And the building was torn down, and that property for probably a decade sat vacant. And then Tommies came back before, you know, planning in the council and ultimately did get approved. So, I know, and I understand and appreciate my colleague's, you know, point about, we don't want to just jump at the first, you know, fish in the water here. But I do worry that is this going to be the Feister RV site all over again, where we're sitting here five, six, seven years from now, and it's still empty? I mean, Alexander the Great's has been closed for five, for five years, as it is. I by no means love this proposal at all. And as I told Brandon when we first met, you know, it's like, when does the automotive ever end? Where is like the, the red line in the sand for, for automotive? Because it does feel like every time we put something in, oh, this is going to be the last time, you know? And it's been through Tommies, it's been through the oil change places that have gone in. So, I, I have a lot of, you know, heartburn even tentatively supporting this. I will, but I don't necessarily feel great about it. And I certainly, you know, appreciate the feedback that, you know, people don't want another car wash. And I certainly don't want another, you know, pawn shop there too, right in the, the heart of Shop &amp; Dine. And I, and I do understand the argument that a pawn shop building, if it just goes into Alexander the Great's and becomes, you know, a sign slapped up there that becomes a pawn shop, is probably easier to redevelop in the future, given that it's just, the building gets knocked down or gets repurposed for something else versus all the mechanics of what a car wash has, as my, you know, colleague mentioned earlier. So, you know, those are kind of my thoughts on this. And does anybody else, Council, yes, Councilwoman?
One thing, because I hear a lot about the businesses that have gone out of business, whether it be Aubries, or even Alexander's the Great leaving, or all these other things. And having been here for a number of years, the reasons why they went out of business isn't necessarily because they didn't have business. So, the, the reason why things are empty still today, I don't necessarily think that they go together necessarily. Oh, that we, you know, we, we know, we don't have Aubries, we don't have this restaurant. I, I really heard my colleagues talk about that that location was a very successful location as a restaurant. Alexander's the Great did not leave because they weren't making money. So, so to even remotely think that we can't attract something else there, I just, I just kind of want to speak that out here because I don't think that that's a fair statement. I think we can. And even why Ashley's left and why these other places left. I mean, you know, they, I don't, from everything I understand, they didn't leave because they weren't, they didn't have the business. And I think that needs to take in consideration as we look at what our future is. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional discussion from the council? Mayor, do you have one other thing?
I do. You know, I just want to appeal to the council one more time. And from my perspective, it's kind of pointing out the obvious, but maybe we all see things from different perspectives. And I definitely respect your viewpoints. I imagine our city, a year, two years, three years from now, there's more and more interest in this particular area near Westland Mall. There's some big investors who want to come in and spend their money here and invest in our city and really improve our city. But they have to drive down Wayne Road, Warren Road, the main corner that leads to this area. The first thing they see on the corner there is a pawn shop. Will they think twice about investing here in this particular area when they see that? Just give that some thought for a moment when you consider this, because I do think it's an important vote for the future of this area.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for your, your comments and your, your appeal for us to consider it. And I think we do. I think the first thing you see when you drive on Wayne and Warren is the cartoons sign. I think the fact that we already have a pawn shop next to cartoons and slice of the 80s already exists. I think if a big multimillion business or industry wants to come in and it's a pawn shop, they will pay them to leave and develop that area if it is that desirable. I think it's happened time and time again in the city of Westland. Somebody finally bites, and we all jump, "Where's McAllisters?" They're not here. You know, "Where's the Burger King on Ford and John Hicks?" Or Hicks? It's not here. So, we, every time somebody comes up to us and has, you know, we don't like vacant buildings either. None of us do. We want a vibrant city. We want a bustling city. We want the Shop &amp; Dine District to be desirable and walkable and all of the warm, fuzzy things that it can be. But just because there is an opportunity doesn't make it the right one. You know, I think if we thought about what the corner of Wayne and Warren was going to look like when I was a little girl, it would still be Quavattis. It'd still be a drive-in, right? But times change. God bless, you know, the family of Alexander's the Greats. They got to retire. Our community gave them a wonderful living and the ability to retire. And, you know, the person who originally purchased this land, did purchase it to make it a marijuana facility. Let's call it what it is. They didn't do their due diligence. The end of the property was not 250 feet away from the residential area. Thank goodness. So, you know, here's the thing, folks. We don't have to jump on something because we want to fill a building. We can wait. We've waited for Ford Road to develop over a decade. So, I'm, respectfully, Mayor, I can see your viewpoint, but the first thing I see is cartoons. I see Tim Hortons, and I see them all. So, I think when these investors are going to come, they're going to see the potential, not the present day. So, again, I, I just.
We are going to have to agree to disagree on this one, sir.
Councilman Hornbuckle, I saw your light come on. Did you have anything else?
Hold on.
Oh, no. Here's that, no. Any additional discussion from the council? Okay. Roll call. Councilwoman Baumann.
No.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
Councilman Wishart.
No.
Pro Tem Sampi.
No.
President McDermott. Motion to deny is approved. New business. Item 1A. Approval of bid for sanitary sewer maintenance services. Administration recommends the bid award to SAC Construction LLC for a three-year term with a two-year extension option. Total amount not to exceed $9,325,000. Is there a motion? Is there support? There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Yes.
Any discussion from the supporter?
Yes, I actually, I moved this off because I, I personally have a thing when we've got that amount of, of a contract to, you know, to have some discussion about it. I guess through the chair, or through the president chair, who would, who could just give us some more information on what this is? There was a lot of information in our packet, but it didn't have anything about Westland.
Yep, so the administration can actually probably take that if you want to, I think.
Thank you.
Director Morton, do you want to?
If you want, I'll just chime in real quick. During the April budget study session, sorry, through the chair, we provided council with a sanitary systems projects list, where it listed all of the districts in Westland that will be taken care of as part of this contract over the next six-year period. For year one, we have District 16, District 28, District 29, and District 35. All will be taken care of as far as the sewer lining process goes. That totaled at 2.5 million. Doug did go over it in April during the budget study session. So, obviously, that was a couple of months ago. So, I can understand why that might not be as fresh. But just wanted to speak on how that was kind of went over at the budget process. And in the years to carry forward, you'll, there's other districts that are obviously going to be addressed every year. There's a different set of districts that will be taken care of to come to that 9.3 million over the five-year term, assuming that we extend it after the third year course. Doug, want to add anything else?
Yes, thanks, through the chair. Also, we had existing, we had a contract with the contractor providing these services. He has since walked away from the contract and from Westland about nine months ago. So, this is going to, this contract will replace those services that could be provided to, to our system.
Thank you. I, I think it's, it's good for this go on record for, for the community to hear as well. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you. I guess I'm going to talk a lot this evening, and I apologize. I got to experience the work firsthand of the last sewer lining company. So, I want to say I'm disappointed but not surprised that they're no longer working with, on the city of Westland, and perhaps a little thankful as well. It was very inconvenient. They blocked the driveway. They failed to connect, or at least cut through the liner on my second lot that has sewer access. We couldn't access our home. We couldn't use the facilities. The world's smallest violin. I was potty, potty training my son at the time. So, that was a whole new adventure of starting over. And the city had to relocate us. So, whomever we choose to use, be it the SAC Construction, and the packet was very thorough. I'm the nerd that read the whole thing because it's something that's, you know, in my memory bank forever. I, I just want us to make sure that we are staying on top of the services and that we can, as a council and as an administration and as a city, exercise what we need to to make sure that these services are being rendered correctly, efficiently for the residents. It, it is a huge inconvenience. It was summer. I, I believe the, the city even had to, you know, relocate several of us on the block. Yeah, I was on Cowan, right? So, I'm sure you remember that. So, it was, this is a huge award, but it is much cheaper to line the sewers than to replace them. But I just certainly would hope that we're kept in the loop of what these services that are being rendered and the timeliness of it, or if we're maintaining a good work relationship. Because if it's anything like the last one, like, I'll just say, "No, no," because it was a mess.
Is there any additional discussion from the council?
I do have a question. So, what kind of check do we have in place as a preventative measure within this contract, within this working agreement, so that we don't run into the situation like we have with the last one? We had, I think, a sewer line collapse even. And, I mean, it was just a, to use a disaster is probably an understatement for what my colleague and families over there went through. So, what kind of, you know, recourse do we have as a city within this agreement with them, with the new contractor?
Council President. If I think I heard, you, you talked a little bit in general terms for what I heard. So, we are in contact, when they're outlining an area, we are in contact with them constantly. Now, if it's an emergency, which was in part what happened on Cowan Road, then we're, instead of doing it proactively, we're doing it reactively. Then we have to set up the bypass, which was a big inconvenience. It was a lot larger of a pipe, so it took longer lead time to get the liner itself. So, if we, and our goal is to be proactive, get these sanitary sewers, especially in the rear yards, lined prior to the failure. Now, the contractor previous did have a failure, as many of you know, in a rear yard. That was his responsibility. His liner, his liner failed. And then he was forced to basically remove and replace a garage for one resident. But that's all on him and his insurance.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you, Director Morton. Appreciate that. All right, that is all. I have any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. New business. Item 1B. Approval of annual subscription renewal for the city's mobile application, Westland Click &amp; Fix. Upon approval, the city's license will resume immediately and will end on July 29, 2025. Total amount, $17,839.11. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilwoman Baumann. There's support by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Loud as thunder.
Okay. Any discussion from the supporter?
Just, I want to, you know, let people know that this is a great program. If you haven't used it, you can, if you're out in the neighborhood and you see a sidewalk uplifted or anything you want to report to the city, you can just take a picture and send it in, and that's really great. So, this is a really great program. I hope the council approved this because it definitely helped people in the community to communicate with the administration without having to call them, but just actually showing pictures and make notes. And then if you ever use it, also give you feedback from the, from the administration saying, "Hey, we on it, we see it, and we out working on it." So, I do support this and hope the council also. Thank you.
Okay. Pro Tem?
Thank you so much. So, I also am in support of this, however. I've had some residents reach out just because they had some issues with the notices section. I'm looking at the app right now. And the notices have not been updated since 2021 in the app. So, I don't know if maybe that section is broken or not, but at this point right now, I, I don't know if we can get an update on perhaps that section doesn't work, or are we not pushing out notices? I know that the city uses other tools, but it just seems like this would be a good place to put notices that we can push out. So, just, I guess, through the chair to our director Brown, who's here. Maybe you can address that.
Yes, through the chair. It's a great question. The notices function was never supposed to be activated when we originally purchased this particular app. We were focusing specifically on the service request side of it. We can use the notices, there's no question about it. It's actually, the notices do integrate with our website along with a number of other features. So, we could use this as another avenue to reach our residents. We do have other systems in play. We have Facebook, we have Instagram, we've got Twitter, we've got our website with the alerting bar. We have our mass notification alerting system for, for big issues. But we could use this also. There's no question about that. And it's, it's, it's an active part of the application. We don't have to do anything special. We just need to start pushing notifications for it, for the most part.
Okay, thank you. So, I would just recommend if we are not going to use it, just inconsistency of having a functional web app is just, maybe we turn that section off or, or maybe it disappears. It's, to me, I had residents ask, when I was talking with them about it, they said there's power outages. And then they had said, "Didn't you hear about the power outages?" And I'm like, "What are you talking about?" what are you talking about? They looked in the notice section, and unbeknownst to me, it said that it had been not updated since 2021. So just given feedback, I think that the actual app, the, you know, mobile app in itself is great. As my colleague alluded to, it allows people real time to report problems, but there's just some kind of things in here that maybe aren't linked appropriately. So we could probably address them, I'm assuming, but just wanted to see if that was something we could use for our notifications that are fired out.
Yeah, and through the chair. Unfortunately, we can't remove that from the app. It's hardcoded into it. The manufacturer won't change anything on that bottom bar. So our path would be to start utilizing it for notices.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. Thank you, Director Brown. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Pro Tem Stampy. Councilman Hornbuckle.
I just want to follow up on a follow-up question on her request. Is that an extra cost?
Through the chair, no, there's no additional cost. It's already part of the application.
Yeah, we're just not using it? Okay, thanks.
Excuse me. In that regard, if we were to use the notices feature, would that be your team putting that out, or would that be, because I know like when we do the social media updates, WLND does, you know, writes it up, puts it out, but for this specifically, would you be or your team be managing that? And what kind of workload would that put on if we were to add that feature in?
So Council President, that's a great question. It would be the WLND team, the communication team that would be pushing out the notices. So there's a consistent messaging across all platforms. There would be training time and things along those lines that we would have to do. So there is, there is some work at the beginning, for sure. Would there be additional labor? Absolutely, because they would have to log into another portal and compose a message on that portal specifically. So yes, there would be work involved with it.
So then WLND would be given full access to log in to the application itself, or the portal that it runs through to push the notification out?
Yes, they would, they would have access to the notice function inside that application.
Okay. Thank you, Director Brown. Councilwoman Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Director Brown, I think I'm confused, because when Councilwoman Stampy first brought it up, you said it's directly connected to the website. So I'm, so how is that, you know, if it's connected to the website, why is it generating old information? And if it's connected to the website and the WLND team is doing the messaging already, why isn't it being ported over?
Through the chair, this is connected to the embedded web form that's on the city website, specifically for service requests. It's not directly linked to the notification alert bar that's on the city website. There's a slight difference between the two.
Sure, yeah. No, I then misunderstood what you were saying when you said they were connected. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't clarify that at the time.
No worries. Thank you.
It's a good question.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bowman.
Through the chair, I just, I guess I want to bring back, bring some history and just clarification for me. Was Nixle, did this replace Nixle? I know, wasn't Nixle a notification tool? Code Red is what replaced. Okay, thank you. Because I was like, I remember there was that other one, and we were getting text messages. So, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item 2, approval of license amendment for proposed marijuana micro-business facility, 39127 Ford Road, Ray Industries LLC. Changes to the ownership from Ray Industries to Ancient Herb LLC. Marijuana selection committee recommends approval subject to the conditions contained in the planning commission communication memo.
Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Pro Tem Stampy. Mo, did you have anything to add?
I do. I'll quickly summarize what these changes are. Thank you, Council President. Ray Industries submitted an application to amend its conditional marijuana license in March of this year. This applicant or conditional licensee was granted that license back in November of '23 by the council. There are three amendments being proposed here. The first adds an operating entity that will be in charge of the day-to-day operations. This entity is named the Micro Clinic LLC. Gregory Raymond, who is the sole member of Ancient Herbs, who is currently the conditional licensee under Ray Industries, will be 50% owner of the Micro Clinic, retaining authority as the controlling principal, essentially. Pauline and Ronnie are each making up 25% of the Micro Clinic. I believe they are here in the audience. We ran background checks on both of them. That's attached in your backup, and they're both clean. The second amendment being proposed here is the change in ownership from Ray Industries to Ancient Herbs. This is identical in ownership. Gregory Raymond, the original conditional licensee, is the sole owner of both. This is being made for risk management purposes, for Gregory Raymond to protect his assets for the tool and dye business that currently exists at this property. The third change is related to state pre-qualification documents, essentially swapping out the name Ray Industries and resubmitting a state pre-qualification with the name Ancient Herbs on it. Those are the three changes being proposed. Greg, I believe his attorney, and Pauline and Ronnie are here to answer any questions.
Okay. Would the petitioner like to come forward? Before I turn it over to the council for questions, anything to add?
No, I don't think so. My name's Greg Raymond. I own the building on 39127 Ford Road.
Good evening, Melvin Babby, representative of petitioner. Thank you.
Okay. And was there any questions from the maker? And any questions from the supporter? Yes, Pro Tem Stampy.
Hi, thanks so much. It's good to see you again. I know that we last saw you, just looking at my records, so I think it was July of 2023?
Yep.
Okay. So based on that, you shared with us the tool and dye shop would be converted over, but I think you were mentioning, and I could be wrong, so that's why I'm asking you, that there still will be an area that the tool and dye shop will operate, and then the other side will be the micro-business. Can you confirm that?
Yes, essentially, the building has 25,000 square feet. We took 3,500 square feet, and that'll be the Micro Clinic or Ancient Herbs portion. And the tool shop is going to remain open as long as we possibly can.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that. That was, that was my question. If it struck my memory correctly, it was last, it was like last year that we came, you came before the council. So that was just clarification. So thank you so much, Mr. Raymond.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
New business, item 3, approval of special land use for proposed marijuana micro-business, 39127 Ford Road, south of Ford, west of Hicks, Ancient Herbs LLC. This is planning department number 0954C. Planning commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and conditions, and subject to the conditions stated in the planning department findings and recommendations.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Pro Tem Stampy. Mo?
Thank you. This is related to the previous item. This is the special land use approval for that item. The subject property here is about three acres in size. It's zone I2. That's our industrial district. It's currently developed with an approximately 30,000-square-foot industrial building, used, as previously mentioned, for a tool and dye shop. The petitioner is proposing to locate a marijuana micro-business in approximately 3,000 square-foot space in the existing building here in the northeast corner. That's what it looks like there on the site, on the floor plan, shaded in blue there. A micro-business can grow up to 300 plants. This is per the state law. It can also buy marijuana plants, buy and sell edibles, concentrates, vaping cartridges, et cetera, and process any plants cultivated on-site. Initially, the business does not intend to grow. However, in their site plan, they have incorporated a, or set aside a small grow room that does feature and comply with our odor ordinance and features an odor control system. Some of the adjacent land uses here, property to the north is zone I1, that's U.S. Fairthane here. Property to the south is I2. It's the Detroit Forest Products. It's a wood distributor. To the east is I2 as well here. It's a vacant piece of property that's undeveloped. And to the west is CB4, Vehicle Service. It's the old Radiator Hospital that is vacant. The future land use designation for the site is industrial, moving out to some site design or existing site layout conditions. The site is accessed by two full-service driveways. Oh, sorry. You can sort of see them here on the screen. It doesn't have direct access off of Ford Road, so you have to use Frontage Drive. It does have a Ford Road address. The site requires 37 off-street parking spaces, which the petitioner is compliant with. The site contains a six-foot screening fence along the southern property line, and the site contains landscaping. However, the applicant is upgrading the landscaping with evergreen trees, shrubs, and some important amount of trees to comply with the zoning ordinance standards, and that's specifically up front along Frontage Road. The existing building is constructed with brick material and metal paneling for accent materials. I believe the applicant is upgrading the facade in the area where the micro-business will be to incorporate some EFIS material and CME block. Site lighting and drainage are all existent, existing, and comply with the zoning ordinance requirements. The recommendation from the planning commission and the administration is to approve the special land use. There are six conditions that have been imposed on all of the marijuana businesses that have come before you. The applicant is agreeing to all of these, but I will need to read them on the record. Number one, the facility must employ a facility-wide odor control plan designed for the grow facility that is in your packet filed with the planning department, and the site plan, floor plan, building plans do comply with that. A security plan that complies with the marijuana business ordinance submitted to the planning department and both the police department, that has been done. The marijuana business licensee shall enter into the community benefits agreement that is legally binding. That is also part of your backup and executed. Number four, continued compliance with the marijuana business ordinance, state and local laws. Number five, all signing and advertising must be compliant with the marijuana business ordinance. And finally, the hours of operation for all marijuana businesses throughout the city are limited between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. That is it. The individuals are still here. I'm happy to answer your questions. Thanks.
Yes, any questions from the maker? Any questions from the supporter? Any additional questions from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Bowman.
Could you clarify a little bit what that, what that means to have the odor part? Because, I mean, having, having just traveled through Canada and through some other areas where there are grow facilities, so through the, just what does that mean to people when they're going to be driving on this bridge over Ford? What's that going to mean? And again, I understand, I think, I think I heard the petition is not necessarily going to grow right now, but I guess I want some more clarification on all of that if that were to happen.
Sure. There are certain ventilation methods that involve specific filters, carbon filters, that I'm not an expert on, that have to go through the building department to be permitted and things like that. It's part of a marijuana grow operation permitting, building permitting process. So that is incorporated into the building plans and the site plans, and that's essentially what I meant by the odor control plan being submitted and including all of that information. I believe it's part of your backup. Actually, I know it is. So if you require more information, I can get with our building official and provide that in terms of the details of what those carbon filters look like.
Sure, I guess, I'm going, will we smell it? If they start growing, are we going to be smelling it as we drive by? Like, I'm like, I, you know, I do Canada.
You should not be able to smell it. That's what the odor control plan is essentially, that's why we require it. That's what it's trying to mitigate. So we hope through those odor control preventions that there is no smell to the general public.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? I do have a question, Mo. Well, one for the petitioner and then one for Mo. With regards to the revenue that we'll be getting from a micro-business, obviously, it's going to be less than what we'd get from a normal marijuana retail facility. Can you speak to what that ultimately is going to look like from the licensing perspective?
We will obtain the general tax revenue that we do. We will also obtain the community benefits agreement dollars, and there is a retail component to this, so we will also obtain that as well.
Okay, great. And then my question for the petitioner, we have had some heartburn in the past, getting kind of spurned on, we're going to develop, and then petitioner's back six months from now, asking for another site plan or modification. What is your ETA on starting this and ultimately completing the project to opening your doors up?
We think we'll be ready in 60 days. We've already made quite a bit of progress, so if everything goes well, I think we can be done in 60 days.
Great. So you're already, sounds like shovels in the groundwork and getting ready to go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, 60 days it is. We hope to, hope to see you that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion from the council? Yes.
And I'm just going to clarify, I'm actually going to be in opposition to this mainly because I want to make sure that I'm representing a voice of the city who doesn't want these. So I'm just going to clarify that. We will have to have roll call, because I will be there. So that is, I think that's a fair statement to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman. Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Stampy.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. We will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up, or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone? Public comment on my right? Anyone? Public comment on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Doing this the right way, not like some people come in with their shirts on their chest. Lori Wilson, Westland, I got two, I got two issues. The first one is, I put in a request for a special pickup, and I put it in last Tuesday before the deadline of 3 o'clock with the city of Westland first. I have yet to hear from them. My special pickup did not happen over the weekend. A friend of mine said, I'll dispose of it for you. So they came and picked up a special pickup. I called Priority. I spoke to a woman. I have yet to hear back from Priority about it. Today is Monday. My trash day is on Thursday. So if I did it on Tuesday, that was two days before my pickup day. That's the first thing. That's the first thing. I know y'all don't want to hear this, but this is August. We still don't have speed humps. We still have the one in each block. So I'm going to assume, which I shouldn't do, because that makes an ass out of me and you, that we're not going to get those extra speed humps this year, because they're getting ready to come up at the end of October, in the middle of November. That's two months from now. What is that? Seventy-eight days? Same as the election. So we're not getting those speed humps. I'm going to ass assume that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mayor, did you, I'll let you respond during your comments, unless you want to use up her remaining minute seventy.
Oh, you can use that time.
Go ahead.
So, Ms. Wilson, thanks for coming up. We'll look into the priority issue, the, the speed humps. Your particular neighborhood, Julius Street, Hanover, that, that neighborhood over there, Annapolis Park, actually has the most speed humps out of any neighborhood in the city. We did that because of the overwhelming requests for speed humps in that area, and we'll be happy to get you more speed humps next spring, to answer your question.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
That was another question.
Public comment, is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak? Anyone else on my left? Yes, Ms. Dale.
Good evening, everyone. Ruth Dale, Westland. I want to thank the mayor for holding his listening tours at different sites once a month throughout our city. The most recent was at the museum complex last Tuesday. One of the residents questioned why, with our eighty thousand-some residents, why they needed, why didn't they get more volunteers at, at the museum complex? I don't think people realize so many, so much help is needed, and there's so many areas, surely there's at least one for everybody to pick from. Gardening, docents, 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 I guess, the archives, all kinds of paperwork, fundraising, even joining the historical society, and I think they're short right now on the historical I had asked and haven't heard back about, was the budget increased for historical? I don't know. And also, back when, I was questioning about community development block grant, a portion going to historical. As I understood, I thought a handicap ramp needed at the Octagon House would qualify for the, for the CDBG. I don't know if the city, as far as money for over there, if the city writes grants, can we get money at historical, at, pardon me, at the state level? But anyway, to end, to all Westlanders, come visit to past. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Is there anyone else on my right? Yes, sir.
Mark Brickle, Westland, twenty-plus years been living here. This is the first time I was here, so forgive me if this has already been addressed earlier. But item G that was on the agenda about the relining the sewers, the, if I heard correctly, the previous contractor walked out? Is that, is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. Is, has his contract been paid off, or what, what happened with that?
I, I can get you an answer on that. If you want to hang out after the meeting, we can get you an answer on that, capture your information to send that to you. I don't know that directly.
Okay. And I was wondering whether that money, if it was not paid off, would be applied to the contract for the new, the new contractor.
That's a, a great question, Mayor. Do you want to take that real quick?
Yeah, so we're, we're billed per job, different lines that they, they, they do. So the previous contractor, obviously, we stopped funding, we stopped paying them, and then the new con, the new approval tonight was just to work with a different contractor. So it's, it's the same pot of money, though. Does that answer your question?
Well, if the contract was not fulfilled and you're still holding money from that previous contract.
Well, they, they weren't paid fully for the, the prior amount.
Okay. So there was money left on that contract that was not paid to them.
Right.
So is that money going to be allotted to the new contractor, the new contractor?
Well, the Water and Sewer Fund is, is the same pot of money, so it's coming from the same place. Does that answer your question?
Okay. I just was curious, because that money, if, if it's a new contract for the nine million or whatever that was, does that include the money that was not paid to the other contractor?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was asking. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. So anyone else on my left? Yes, Ms. Maxwell.
My name is Lakeisha Maxwell, Westland. I'm, I'm up here just to remind everyone that the Norwayan Community Citizens Council will be having the tea fundraiser luncheon on Saturday, September seventh, at the Jefferson Barnes Center. You can go to the Facebook page of Norwayan Community Citizens Council to register and purchase your ticket. Tickets are thirty-five dollars. There will be a best hat, best hat contest, music, basket, raffle, lunch, and fun. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Eleven-thirty to two o'clock.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak? Public comment? Anyone else on my left wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Worm.
Christina Worm, proud chair of the Norwayan Community Citizens Council. Just wanted to reiterate that we are going to have this fun hats-off-to-the-Roseys event tea, so invite your loved ones. I know you are welcome as well. We just had our back-to-school extravaganza with our backpack giveaway. We had over three hundred families attend. We've, all of our backpacks found homes, so that was a wonderful thing. We did see a couple council members there, but as always, everyone is always welcome to attend our events, and we would love to see you, and I know the residents would love to see you in the community as well. Again, just so they can put a face, you know, put a name to the face and get to know you guys, ask questions. I'd love to see, you know, more interaction between the community and the council, just to, you know, see what, get people to say more what they want to say instead of just on Facebook, stop being so enamored with the whole situation. We also are going to be doing a basket auction, so maybe a fun City of Westland, you know, council-sponsored basket would be kind of fun. You guys are more than welcome. And we do also have our Harvest Fest coming up. That's going to be October nineteenth, and that, again, is free with our community partners, for everyone within the organization, you know, the, in the community. It's not just Norwayan alone. And again, all of my friends on the council are all welcome to attend October nineteenth. Mark your calendars. And I wanted to say Blues Brews and Barbecue was amazing, so thank you so much for that. It's always fun to volunteer for that event. Everyone that you guys always have working that event is very responsive. They're very organized. I usually work the information tent, volunteer tent, so I never have a problem getting people's questions answered or getting service or assistance to anyone. It always seems to run very smoothly, so kudos, and thank you for such a beautiful, wonderful event, again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on my right? Anyone else on my left? Yes. Frances.
Good evening, council members, everyone. Juanita Francis, long-term resident here in Westland, this year makes twenty-five years. First, I want to thank you, council members, for passing the motion to deny the rezoning of CB-three to CB-four. One of the biggest things that I loved about our family moving here twenty-five years ago was, it was a family, like our slogan, All American City. I didn't know nothing about Westland. My husband at the time moved us here because of the school district, because of the family environment, the safetiness, everything, and I'm like, this is amazing. All our five daughters are grown now, and I am still proud to say I am a Westland resident. I know that when we pass through a valley season, whether it be our business, our community, our nation, it's, it's important to understand valley doesn't mean forever. There is always a mounting that is going to come after your valley season. So I strongly urge y'all to be diligent with doing your due diligence to make sure that we are sticking with the master plan, to make sure that our city be vibrant again, there are things to do for the family, for the community, for everybody. People are looking to us at the Blues Brews and Barbecue. They came from everywhere. I had a dear friend that came from California, and they're like, you guys are buzzing. I mean, that is really good. So the buzz is going, and let's keep it going. If we have to wait a moment before we can get Alexander the Great where he should be, wait. Don't, like, like someone said, don't, don't bite at the first fish that come. Many going to come. People know. We are on the, we're on the uptake. We are on the uptake, and great things are about to happen again and again and again in Westland. So some things are hard, and I understand, but you will see. You will see the blessings that are going to just keep overflowing. People are going to be, like, fighting to get here. My, my other concern, and my, this is really a big concern, our daughter had to move out of Woodcrest Apartments. Eight mushrooms grew in her apartment. To this day, they did not make the, the repairs, and they were very defiant with what plan and told them to do, so she had to move back home with me. I would like for someone to follow up with Woodcrest Apartments not having the certificate of occupancy for four hundred and fifty-six units there. Thank you.
Thank you. And that last one has been on, you know, Pro Tem Sampi and mine's radar for quite some time, so we'll follow up and give you an update. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on my right? Anyone else on my left? Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Koglechus.
Hi, Kim Koglechus. I just wanted to mention Devon Adams isn't here anymore, but as far as I know, we still need more volunteers for the Beer and Wine Fest on September seventh. So if anybody's interested, you could get ahold of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Public comment? Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to comments from the administration.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, residents. Thank you, everybody who spoke tonight and everybody watching at home. First of all, I want to congratulate our State Representative, Peter Hersberg, on his impressive victory in the primary election. Great job, Peter. Thank you to everybody who attended my listening tour that took place last week at the Westland Historic Village Park. Ruth, thank you for being there and for speaking tonight about it. It was a great location to do the event at. Thank you, Sharon Sullivan, for your work and the rest of the board there for hosting us and being so gracious. We really appreciate it, and I think we had a great turnout and great feedback over there. And, you know, they opened the buildings up so that people who attended my listening tour could tour them. They had some classic vehicles there. I think it was a nineteen-seventeen Cadillac, kind of looked like a Model T, and then there was a Ford Fairlane there, too, which was really beautiful. So we had a great time. There was ice cream. These events are really fun. I'll keep plugging them as we go. We haven't scheduled, I think we're going to hold off on September because I have another big event I'm going to talk about for September, but we will do one in October, and we're thinking about the Norwayan community for that one, but we don't have a time and date yet, so just be patient. I will announce that one soon. But they're a great way for residents to come talk to us in person. I like to make sure I'm available to everybody as much as possible, as lo, as well as our police chief, police chief, fire chief, and all city staff that can attend. And we have a couple pretty good events coming up in the next two weeks. The annual Cruising Heinz Car Cruise will be on Sunday, August twenty-fifth, from nine a.m. to four p.m. The Women of Westland Ball will be held on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, from seven to nine p.m., right here at Westland City Hall. The Walkenbach Studios dedication, and this is dedicated to our former WLND Director, Craig Walkenbach, that'll take place on Thursday, August nineteenth, at eleven a.m. in honor of Craig, who we lost earlier this year. I'm sorry, September nineteenth. I apologize. Household Hazardous Waste Day will be held on Saturday, August thirty-first, from eight a.m. to one p.m. in the Westland Mall parking lot. We're also currently working with all parties involved on groundbreakings for a couple of big projects that we're doing here. The Fire Station Number Two over at Warren and Merriman Road, and then also the Nankin Square and Amphitheater, which is right next door to City Hall here. We're working with Wayne County to get that scheduled. We wanted to kind of hold up for Wayne County because they are a big part of the funding for this project. Again, this project is funded with money from the federal government, the state government, the county government, and then our Tifa Board. So we, we put together a lot of money to, to make that possible, and I think it's going to be a great project. So I just wanted to let City Council know that once we have those dates, we'll get them to you. CSX Railroads has informed us that they'll be closing the Ford Road service tracks on the south crossing of Fronted Street on Tuesday, August twentieth, tomorrow, to replace the rail at that location. It's expected to be closed for one or two weeks. Trying to get that done as fast as possible. My office was on the phone with the Railroad Association of Michigan today, because with them doing so many crossings at once, I know this is a bit of an inconvenience. I want to make sure that we're paying attention to what's closed when and traffic flows and make sure that we can kind of hurry them up. But they have jurisdiction over their railroads, and they're, they can work on them whenever they want, but I want to make sure we're in communication with them about moving these projects along, so it's less of an inconvenience for everybody. City offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day on Monday, September second. And then here's the big event coming up in September. September seventeenth will be my first annual State of the City speech. Pretty excited about it. We're going to talk about what we've accomplished so far in the, the first nine months, nine, ten months of me being mayor, and our vision for the next couple of years for our city. So I'm really excited about that. Again, it's Tuesday, September seventeenth, at Soho Banquet and Event Center. Doors open at three p.m., with the event beginning at three-thirty with the Chamber Business Awards, followed by my State of the City address at four and a reception at five. We are asking for RSVPs and registration, so you can go on www.lavoniawestland.org, O-R-G, to register for that. I'd also like to congratulate Burger One of Westland on their grand opening last week. That was a, a pretty good spot. I got to try the food. Really good. Excited about that. And then last, I just want to wish a Westland resident for over thirty years, her name is Johnny Mae Boone. She turned one hundred last week, and I, I was able to attend her birthday party over at Laurel Manor Banquet Hall on Saturday night with her family. She had fifteen kids and nearly two hundred grandkids. So, yeah. So, so, yeah, big family. We had a really nice time, and I just wanted to thank the Boone family for, for inviting me to their, their birthday celebration for Johnny. She's truly a blessed woman. That's it for me tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. Any comments from the City Attorney's Office this evening?
Nothing from the City Attorney's Office, Council President.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney McNamara. We will begin council comments this evening with comments from Councilman Wishart.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming today. I was on the mayor's listening tour, and it was phenomenal. I'd highly suggest more people show up to it. That's all I got tonight, and have a good night.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you. Tonight, we approved a, the smart contract to allocate City of Westland's municipal and community credits to Nankin Transit. As part of the commission, I, I was actually just had my meeting the other day, and I wanted to let people know what kind of ridership Westland has and how much Westland is using this service, and if people don't know what the service is. And if people don't know what the service is, Nankin Transit, and correct me, I can be corrected, but basically for seniors and above, and I think 55 is qualified as seniors in their parameters, they can actually get rides to many different places, and especially medical, but they can actually get rides to, if they're going for education, or obviously dialysis is a big one, and they can also do leisure and other reasons, they can actually use the bus services, and there is a fee for that as well. But just to give some context, is this past year, from January, nope, it's the wrong year, sorry about that, from January 1st, for a full year, from January 1st to 2023 through December 31st, 2023, 20,625 trips were taken from Westland residents originating from Westland, and that is 36% because they share this with Canton, Garden City, Inkster, Livonia, and Westland. And Westland is the largest user of this, and it's actually increasing. They actually decreased because of COVID. If you go back a couple of years, there was quite a bit more that they had, but this year, they're already running at 10,000 for January to June, which is 34%. So it's exciting to see this very well-used service that we need because we don't have any buses and things like that, and I know even for the dialysis, it's just been a huge thing that people can actually get on the bus and get to their appointments. So I just wanted to kind of let people know that it is highly used by our residents, so I'm really excited. I'm glad we were able to pass that to give those credits so that it does help and have that contract. The other thing, I forgot two weeks ago, I wanted to send them at the Blues Brews and Barbecue. I think this is the 13th?
Sixteen.
How many years is this?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth year of Blues Brews and Barbecue?
Yeah.
Okay, then I may be off. I thought it started in, anyway, I think I've gone every year, so anyway. And I just wanted to, what's that? Sorry.
They were passing notes.
You're passing notes, okay, sorry.
It's from the mayor.
There must have been my, so anyway, I just wanted to reiterate that I was really excited to have gone to that again for this year, and I think maybe that's all I have today that I'm looking at my stuff. So again, thank you.
We will now hear from Councilwoman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Be brief today, calling all Westland veterans. The Wayne Ford Civic League this year will be bringing back their meal program for veterans, surviving spouses, and active-duty members. If you were part of the program before, expect some literature in your mailbox probably within the next seven days, probably less, but depending on how the mail system works. And also following after that, there will be an online registration form that we are currently creating and so, so, so close to having it ready. So I know a lot of, almost I think all my colleagues have agreed to support this program, so we're asking you to tell your friends, let you know that the veteran meal program is coming back, will be taking registrations. We might have a hard cap, though, so don't wait, okay? So if you know anybody that hasn't participated in the program before, do ask them to go ahead and keep an eye out because we'll probably put that out on the social media pages out there for the online registration. And any of the community at some point who wants to help us fund this, that is asked for, too. So we're probably expecting this program to cost about $20,000 this year, so it takes a lot of fundraising to get it done. So if you have immediate questions, you can pass them in, I'll pass them along. I think Councilwoman Rukowski, too, is a good source of information as well, but do let your veteran family and friend know that the program is coming back this year, and we're here to support you and looking forward to doing it again. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Hart. We will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
I got nothing today. Thank you.
Nothing seen? Okay, thank you. We'll hear from Councilwoman Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for sticking with us here. Seems like it's one of the longer meetings that we've had in quite some time. And just to double down on what Councilman Hart had mentioned, yes, the veterans program is back. You should expect your mail to arrive to your home Friday, Monday. So if you are looking to register for that, so you're either a family of an active member, spouse of a widowed member, or retired or formerly served, because not everybody's retired, just a veteran, you would be eligible for this program. And if you are not, I'd ask you kindly to eventually visit our website and make a donation. Maybe you want to do that in honor of someone that has served in your family. You know, this is our last meeting before our children go back to school, and so before you see us again, our kids will be going back to school. It's so weird that they go before Labor Day, but I just want to extend to our school families, so our teachers, our staff, the people of the community that could volunteer their, well, not really volunteer, but some volunteer, but our crossing guards, our bus drivers, our janitors, our lunch staff, and everybody who just makes the mechanics of schoolwork that you're seeing, and we appreciate all of your work that you pour into our greatest assets, and that's our children. I just want to wish everyone a successful 24-25 academic year. I know one of my colleagues will be graduating a child this year, so we won't make her cry yet. And, oh, two of my colleagues, yeah, I forgot Michael's there. So at any rate, mine's not ready to matriculate out of grade school yet, but what I'm going to ask of you, though, is, you know, can we please pay attention? We've had so many incidents with our young people, so put your cell phone down, slow down, leave for work a few minutes early, go get your Tim Hortons, and then have a nice casual drive to work. Don't be distracted, and pay attention to our young people because a lot of them are so focused into their little electronics that they're not paying attention to what they're doing. And as the adults, we sometimes need to be paying attention for them, but let's make sure everyone gets to school safely this year and home from school safely this year and just gets the opportunity to enjoy being a child in school. And I hope the best for all of our extracurricular teams and clubs. And, you know, my favorite part of our council meetings is when we recognize young people for being caught being kind, and I think that's the other side of the message is, before your children go to school, tell them it's not okay to be a bully. Tell them it's not okay to be bullied. We're losing too many young people to just tragic instances that shouldn't be happening. So I just am sending peace and love and prayers to our families throughout the district, no matter what school they go to, to have a wonderful upcoming academic year. Good evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Pro Tem Sampi.
Thank you. Councilwoman, of course, had to remind me, that was something that I've been faced with that I'm still not realizing the fact that I do have a senior who will be graduating in 2025, my 17-year-old, six-foot senior. And I apologize in advance if I talk about him this year, the milestones of getting your child to that point. I think everyone can be applauded because it takes teachers, it takes family members, it takes a lot of people in their life. So I am wishing, obviously, everyone a great, successful year in whatever school district that you go to. I wanted to thank Rep. Wagala to give us an update. I think that was great. I love when we have our legislative updates from individuals that come. It's helpful for our residents to know what they're doing in Lansing. I wanted to congratulate all the organizations that benefited from Blues Brews and Barbecue. I know that we did applaud many people, administration volunteers last time, but really, it is a team effort, and I wanted to applaud them and thank them because they're the ones that continue year after year to make it a success. I mean, without them, we would not be able to have a successful event, and I think this year, as you guys could see, and those that are watching us back, we gave back a lot of money to organizations, and well-deserved. Council President and myself met with DTE. Yes, it did happen. It did. Those that do not know, there's going to be more information to come on a community event. It's going to allow our residents to talk to numerous individuals from DTE. We have not gotten that date set yet, but once we do, I'm sure both of us will be sharing it out, but we did inform our colleagues to let them know that we were going to have a meeting, and they gave us a presentation. There is progress going on, but again, like I had stated to them, we don't know about the progress. So what we don't know, we can't support. So they've, I think, made a conscious effort, wouldn't you agree, that they're going to be sharing more information, but this event, this future community event, will allow individuals to come and address numerous departments with their concerns, everything from billing to lighting in their area. So just kind of keep in mind that we have something that we're going to be sharing soon. I was able to stop by the backpack event, and the Norwayan Citizens Council does so many great things, but this one was fantastic. My husband and I and grandson, we were walking out, we were having my grandson in a stroller, and a lot of parents were just overwhelmed with joy. This opportunity doesn't always present themselves as something where they can just walk up and get a backpack and enjoy a evening out, so just giving, just kudos to Norwayan Citizens Council for putting that on. It was a fantastic event, and as mentioned, 300 backpacks, and I think my colleague was at the check-in table, and they ran out of backpacks in certain levels, too, so I'm sure next year they'll be looking for additional support. I look forward to the Norway Citizens Council, their rosy tea, so I'm trying to gather up enough individuals to go to that on Saturday, September 7th. Thank you, Ms. Maxwell, for reminding us. I think it's going to be a great event. It looks like we, as a council, we need to support with a raffle basket, so maybe we'll gather that up. I wanted to also mention, we hosted two study sessions recently. They went very well. Something that I'm passionate about is the CERT program, so I've talked about that for quite some time. The program in itself is going to be mostly funded by FEMA, and I wanted to thank Chief Stamper, Chief Dolly, Director Awadi, and the mayor's office for allowing us to put together our working committee. So I think that you'll be hearing more from us about what is going to need from, I guess, my colleagues, but also what it's going to look like for those in the community. There's going to be an opportunity for people to volunteer, so just kind of keep in mind that if you're looking to, whether you're young or old or whatnot, we're going to have a spot for you. I think Chief, that's going to be our first order business, is figuring out number of individuals and areas in the city, so more to come on that, but I'm really passionate and excited that council will be supporting it, and it's something that we've talked about for a while. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank those that are going to be involved in advance with the planning. So I know it's been mentioned about the annual craft beer and wine. I won't belabor that, so that's on Saturday, September 7th. There's a lot of events going on. I'm looking forward to the She Rocks Westland event, as mentioned, mayor said that it's going to be a ball. I think it's going to be a recognition, but I think it's going to be a ball, too. I think everyone's going to be dressed to impress, so I look forward to that on Tuesday, August 27th. Definitely register, so it's absolutely free. They're just trying to get an idea on what food, what the food numbers are, but I did speak with our director, and it sounds like there's over 100 people registered already, so it looks like it's going to be a great event. And because of the Labor Day holidays, so our next meeting will be on Tuesday, September 3rd at 7:00, so don't come on Labor Day because we won't be here either. I know that's messing with our calendar, but again, I look forward to seeing everyone in a couple of weeks. Be safe and kind with one another, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Okay, got a few things to say here tonight. Appreciate y'all bearing with me. Oh, one, just a note that the mayor passed me. He did misspeak with regards to the WLND dedication for our former director and our friend, Craig Walkenbach. That dedication will be taking place on August 29th for the WLND studio dedication for Craig Walkenbach. It'll be on August 29th. When things happen in this city, I think we're all, you know, as council members, we want to respond to things that happen in the city when we know them, when we know about them. But when we don't know about them, we don't know how to respond because we have no clue that something has gone on or that something is an issue. And like when there's an incident with PD, chief's always on top of it, sends us an update. We're very much appreciative of that. It's not something that we always microphone out to the public because we want to give them their space to investigate or do proper police procedure to inform us. Same thing with the fire department, an incident happens. So when things happen, I would just appreciate that this council is updated. I know that with previous administrations, we've all expressed that same concern when things happen, and then it's like, oh, really? That happened? I didn't know about that. And two weeks, three weeks, a month, whatever, later. So the more information that can be shared by the administration with the council when things happen, it doesn't mean we have to know every detail and minutia all the time, but the more that can be shared with us, the more we can be brought in when things happen, I think the better it will be for all of us as a council to work with the administration, to work with one another, to make decisions moving forward. And so I hope that we can be brought in on things more often if something happens. And tough things happen, and not everything's always rosy all the time around here, right? Our jobs aren't, the responsibility you've given us isn't always perfect to deal with, but the more we can know, I think the better it is. My colleague already mentioned the DTE meeting. Yes, we did have a productive meeting with DTE. I think we're both of the attitude that we'll believe it when we see it. I think there's been a lot of false promises in TV ads over the years and slick advertising of, we're going to make these upgrades to the grid, and we're going to cut down more trees, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that. From their presentation to us, it does seem like they're making an attempt to do more, but again, I think we're all in the camp that we'll believe it when we see it because we have been a community beleaguered and battered by power outages. I think no matter where you live in Westland, regardless of what zip code you're in, 85 or 86, you've all experienced numerous power outages, and you've all gotten the updates on your phone. We expect your power to be on the next day, and the next day rolls around, and your power's not on, and two days later, and your power's still not on, and three and four days later. And at that point, you're throwing out groceries, hundreds of dollars worth of groceries. You're going to stay with a relative, you're getting a hotel, or if you're someone with a disability who requires medical equipment to be powered up, this is a life-or-death matter. So I will say this, and I do not normally speak positive about DTE, but I'm pleased that we finally got this meeting. Thank you to my colleague, thank you to the administration for helping this get set up, and as she mentioned, as Pro Tem Sampi mentioned, there will be a future public meeting. They're having one in Livonia, I believe, next month in the middle of September, and they're going to be looking to have one in Westland, and we will all get those details out, as I'm sure the administration will, when that meeting happens. But again, I'll believe it when I really start to see it from them. Was mentioned regarding the tea event from the Norway Community Citizens Council, so please get a ticket and donate to that. I want to thank Christina Warman, the entire Norway Citizens Council, Director Joanne Campbell, and all the other community members and groups who volunteered at the backpack event. As my colleague mentioned, I did have the opportunity to work the check-in station, but really, it was a we-over-me event. It was the collective of everybody in the Citizens Council, the Science Fair folks that came out to help, all the residents who gave out backpacks and were a part of that process as well, our community, police officers were there, too, so the Westland PD was well-represented and helping out at the event, too. So thank you to everybody who put on a great event to make some kids' school years start off the right way, because if you're going into the hole without the supplies necessary that you need, the backpack, the school supplies, and other kids are showing up to class and you don't have your bag yet, you don't have your pencils and your pens and your crayons and your notebooks yet, that weighs on a kid, and that weighs on a kid's psychology. And no kid should have to, especially in the richest country on earth, no kid should have to start off a school year in a deficit like that. So to everybody in the Citizens Council and all the community volunteers, Westland PD, my colleague, everybody who helped out, thank you for putting on another tremendous event. Unfortunately, a couple of kids were turned away. We've had years where there's been excess in backpacks when I volunteered, and years where, like this, we had to unfortunately turn a few kids away, but it was a really great event, and thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody who donated, volunteered, and made the event a huge success. Again, just to reiterate, too, thank you to everybody who volunteered at Blues Brews and Barbecue. I know I mentioned that during the last meeting and at the start of this meeting, but again, the event is not possible without the one- the event is not possible without the wonderful volunteerism and the spirit of giving back from the Westland community, so thank you for that. I want to thank my colleague, Councilman Hart, Councilwoman Murkowski, and then Vic Bera over at the Wayne Ford Civic League. I know this is something they're heavily involved in, not only just promoting it, but all the shopping and everything that, hours and hours and days on end that goes into prepping it and getting it ready and then the day of with people boxing up the dinners for the veterans. So thank you both and thank you to Vic Bera, former Director Bera, for all the work that goes into making such a successful event for our veterans here in Westland and, you know, certainly if you're able to volunteer or to make a donation, I would recommend doing that. I had the opportunity a couple of weeks back to meet with Director Ali Abazid. He is the Public Health Director for the City of Dearborn. One thing that I've had the chance to speak up here about, and, you know, last year when I was out on the doors knocking and talking to folks, is the potential idea of forming a City of Westland Public Health Department. I think public health is, you know, critically important and to the well-being of people in this community and it's something that is a huge deficit in our society, that we don't focus on public health. And we, in the wealthiest nation on earth, allow things to get to a crisis point with people because they don't have the money, the means, the resources, or know where to turn. And I think that that is a disgrace and I think that there is more that we can do. Obviously, the state has its public health department and the county has it, but there's only, you know, so many tentacles outstretched that they can reach with regards to public health. And while the county does a fantastic job, there are a lot of folks in our community and in communities all across Wayne County that fall through the cracks. So a public health department is not something that I can sit here and promise you we will get done or we will start tomorrow. It is a big undertaking. In Dearborn, it started, they actually had one previously, it went away, and then their mayor brought it back. And it started with one person, which was Director Ali Abazid. And I had the chance to talk with him and kind of pick his brain. How did your department get restarted in Dearborn? What is the role and scope that you focus on in the city? What are the costs? Because it's going to be a huge costly undertaking. And, you know, he filled me in with a lot of great information and in the future, I would like to, you know, potentially have this conversation with the council, with the community, with the administration on what can we do in areas of public health? Whether it's forming our own public health department, which I would ultimately like to see us do, some of the conversations around community paramedicine that I've had with the chief, with my colleague Pro Tem Sampi and some of our firefighters in the Westland Fire Department, local 1279. I just think that there's a, you know, a lot we can do. We've already kind of started that pathway. Our police department has, you know, kind of taken the lead on that with the crisis response team, having a domestic violence advocate, a social worker, and a substance use specialist that works with the PD, and I think that that work is great and I think that that is something worthy of building on. Because if you don't take care of people's public health, that is a downward effect on everything else in their life. Whether it's a kid who needs to go to school and they can't go to school because they have a, you know, a health problem, a disease, a condition, whether that is someone who suffers from a substance use disorder who's trying to get back up on their feet and turn their life around, or whether that's someone that suffers from a chronic condition or an illness. We had our state representative here earlier mentioning, you know, battling fibromyalgia and we know that residents all across Westland face conditions. And so focusing on someone's public health and well-being, I think, should be a core commitment of what we do. Oftentimes, when you hear about, well, what are cities supposed to focus on? Well, it's pick up my trash on time, it's have good police and fire response, it's fix my roads and infrastructure, and it's have adequate parks and recreation services. And I think all of that is critically important. And when we fail to do those things, like when priorities had issues in the past, you know, that's when people get mad and they get upset and rightfully so. But I think part of that core of what our commitment is to you as residents, to people in our community, should be a focus on public health and well-being. So I look forward to having a much broader conversation on that in the future. My colleague mentioned the ARPA and CERT study sessions that we had, very productive. We'll be, you know, probably having another ARPA discussion to figure out how we want to spend the remaining balance of your ARPA dollars. I think a lot of exciting things that we could, you know, potentially invest in. And then I wanted to thank my colleague, Pro Tem Sampi, the mayor, Chief Stamper, and, you know, everybody, Director Awadi, who've been working on the subgroup for the CERT program. I think this is going to be something exciting and much needed that we're rolling out, so thank you for the leadership on that and taking the lead. I very much appreciate that. And then finally tonight, I will, oh, two things. Ms. Dale, not here anymore, but she mentioned investing in the Historic Village as part of the ARPA Subcommittee. One thing we're looking at is finally putting in a paved parking lot over there at Historic Village Park so they can expand the events and offerings that they have, potentially weddings, corporate and business events. It would make it a lot easier for them if they have a paved parking lot versus a dirt and gravel, you know, muddy lot. And then finally, I wanted to thank the Clerk's Office. Elections, especially now after the passage of Prop. 2, Proposal 2, are not an easy undertaking. And what you see on Election Day when you go to vote or when you get your ballot in the mailbox is just a sliver of the hard work and dedication that you see from Clerk LeBlanc, Deputy Clerk Inman, and their entire team. So it takes a army of people to really make Election Day successful and a lot of pre-gaming to make sure that our elections stay free and fair with accurate results and we get, you know, a timely response back to the county when things have to be certified and you as a community get timely updates on that. So thank you Clerk LeBlanc, thank you to your entire team. We know it's a big undertaking and now more than ever with all the added regulation that has gone into the electoral process. And with that, if anybody needs anything, you're always welcome to reach out to me on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott. Call me at 734-890-2146 or text me at that same number or you can email me as well. Not always able to get back to you right away because I do work during the day as a recruiter, so I'm on the phone quite often. But with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion's moved.
Thank you.